System and geothermal power, similar to this library, which also has a geothermal system. So with that, I guess, call the meeting to order. Please all rise with the pledge of allegiance. And we've got a flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, where we shall stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Rick, thank you. Um, so just wanted to do a quick update. I've got a slide you can share. There's some things going on around town. I don't remember what I put in here. Exciting news that we received last week. Oh, wait until she gets that up. We need to see if you put the flag in the breezes.
It is in the breezes.
I'm trying to get it to switch to the mouth. There we go. Okay, so anyway, very exciting news. Last week in town, received a $800,000 grant award for Connecticut connectivity project that we'd submitted last year. We did not make the first round of funding, but we asked to be put in for the second round. It came through. We just were notified last week. So that's really exciting improvements to Scotland Avenue. So that'll be a project. We'll kind of get more information about the grant award and talk about the project and the project budget going forward. That'll come before the board, selectmen, or finance. Also just sort of highlight, it's a busy summer, a lot going on. A lot of projects are kind of moving through the system now. As I mentioned, the geothermal HVAC project, which is replacing the heating and air conditioning system at town campus, which was really old and having a lot of problems. And now we have our highly efficient geothermal system that's up and running. So they're just doing a little closeout on the project, but that is pretty much done and up and running. And everybody in town staff, and I actually think a lot of our residents are all so pleased again. Because it got a little difficult, I know, through, in June particularly, it was pretty challenging in town hall. So also, our EV charging stations that we had started this last year, we had a few hiccups because of one of the vendors, but we installed four new EV chargers. And those were, actually, I have other ARPA, it was not ARPA. It was a grant with Eversource that was in partnership with the state of Connecticut. And then the town appropriated some money for that out of the capital, out of the CIP fund. But anyways, we're doing a little ribbon cutting tomorrow. And, um, and the ones that most people will notice are the ones down by the scrap, right in front of Stock and Shop. So there's four more chargers. I saw people using them already. They're also at the senior center by more time hall. And then I think the other one is at the police station that's being used for a police vehicle. Exchange field, that's a big project, redoing all the fields. And that is pretty much completed from what I understand, and they're just winding it down. They'll be ready for use in August. So I'm with the football team will be happy and other sports teams that use those fields. That's a long overdue project and it's been sitting in CIP for a long time. So exciting to see that finish. We also are going to be starting construction on the Woodland Bradley Road sidewalk improvement plan, which is basically adding sidewalks on Woodland Road all the way down Route 79 to the town, to Boston Post Road and uniting with the town's green and Bradley Road. So that's a big, I think, pedestrian improvement project that people are going to be really excited about. So that construction will be starting, and that was funded through CIP as well as the state grant. The Flintlock Bridge Rehabilitation was a problem bridge that we put into the lots of funding, which is also state funding. They cover 100% of the construction cost of that project. I think it was lots of them. Should've checked with Public Works on some of this because I was doing it from memory. So, but it was definitely a state grant. And then finally, Garden Point, which we're all excited to see. We did finally get our permits from D for the project. So I think there's an Army Corps of Engineer permit that we were told isn't a big deal and would be coming shortly. So they can start the bidding process for the construction project. And then we can move forward with construction in the fall. So that is really going to be great for the community. But everything will be open still up through probably September before they would start closing the Garden Point down for those improvements. So those are just some things that I thought was exciting to highlight, that things are moving now. We're starting to see more activity in town and all good stuff. So that is my update. And I will turn it over for the ladies on the boards or selectmen comments. Anybody, that's been kind of a lot of reports and commissions don't meet during July. So I don't know if there's any updates that people need to share now.
I got them.
Okay? No?
But I see Sam here, he'll know. Green Hill is now open east-west, right? It's now just a longer town.
Until they do the bridge closure. I don't think they did the bridge closure yet.
That's for the school. You're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, the water me.
Yeah, there's been a lot of road closures. So, but the police department has been really good about putting updates on Facebook for those closures. And that is a new feature, if people aren't aware, that they have a Facebook page on the Madison Police Department. I think it's incredible because there's a lot of great information. And now we've got other public safety resources to look to on Facebook for that. So hopefully, our commissioner here maybe had a little ambulance. I didn't want to say that, so that's great.
There's been a lot of complaints on Facebook about the lack of understanding of the word yield. I'm saying it, because that has been a hot topic. So up in the north, that circle of 79, nobody seems to understand it needs to go back to school. So, yeah, it's, it's bad.
Bring that up. Well, again, a lot of people, you know, there's not a lot of, rotaries are still not common, right? And so people have to learn that that's, there's definitely an etiquette to it.
I almost got hit tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's maybe an educational campaign through the Facebook, you know? We can kind of do this is the rules of the road, you know? And also, user turn to say no on a rotary too. Usually there's a lot of people who are, when you're getting on and when you're getting off and where you're going. But anyway, that's enough.
The other full disclosure, I can do one more full disclosure too. I'm going to go public with this one. The, the readers, they work. By the police officer, they work. They're doing license plate readers.
Oh, oh.
I was read, I was read coming off of the highway and found out my car was not registered. And I didn't know that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Little Scott Murphy sock, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the downside of online.
But it works. I was actually pretty happy to like giddy pig the process, so.
Yeah, that's great.
I learned a big life lesson there.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right, with that, then, if there's no more selectmen comments, opening up for citizens comments. We have a lot of people in the audience tonight. Is anybody who would like to stand up for a public statement for citizens comments? Raise your hand.
There'll be a time at the end as well.
Uh, there will be a time at the end, yeah. Um, Allison, please.
Hi, everybody, I'm Allison Murphy. I'm the library director, and I just wanted to welcome you all to our beautiful library. We are so excited that you're using our space for your meeting. You're welcome to come any other time. And I hope you all have your library cards, if you don't, I'm sorry. I'm just going to do library card. Oh, maybe anywhere for you. Thanks.
Great. Any hands, people online that would like to participate in citizen comments? No hand raised? Okay, great.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, please.
Babe Austin, I'm a six-year-old. One comment about the, I don't know if this is right form, one comment about the senior center. In talking to some people who attend events there, usage has decreased over the years. So that's just anecdotal. I don't know if the data supports that or not. But I'd like to suggest that we look into reducing the age of membership, maybe from 65 to 55. A lot of our neighboring towns, Billford, Clinton, North Frankfurt, you know, they have a membership age at 55. So that might increase their, they'll be, uh, be worth a lot.
Great, thank you for your time. That was an Iowa ask for politics. Just like.
Yeah.
They have some really good trips.
They do, they have a lot.
Really good activities.
I struggle with that because I'm 55.
I know, that's.
I qualify.
I think you do.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other public comment?
I started a couple minutes later. Is this the time as far as comments on the, um, the timing of the vote for the community center?
Anything, you can talk about anything.
Or did you want to talk about, do you want to, guys want to fill that in first?
So it's your choice to do it at the beginning of the meeting or the end of the meeting? That is not on the agenda today, so it's not related to the agenda. But you can easily, if you want to make a note.
Just name an address.
Okay, I'm Pastor Greg Scialzo, 64 Walkers Road, Madison, Connecticut. I'm my wife, Patty, I've been in town since 1982. We raised our three kids here. The older one, we're in town also, they have residence here. And so our grandkids are here. The vote for the additional funds for the community center, additional money. I know there was a debate over when it should be scheduled. And I'm requesting that if you could schedule it for November as opposed to February. And my reasoning is, the main reason is transparency. In talking to different people in the town, for right or for wrong, there are a number of people who felt the approval vote for the community center kind of went through without the proper publication, or they were not adequately informed, or it wasn't properly publicized. So if you had it during the presidential election, nobody can claim, you know, it was kind of snuck in because that has the largest turnout of any in the elections. So that kind of eliminates that argument. There's also, rightly or wrongly, there are a number of people you talk to and they say, well, you know, that approval went for product X at Y cost. And now we're getting faced with the option of to get product X, we need Y plus 25%, or we have to take less X for Y. And they say, well, that's not what we voted for, you know? So, and they have an argument about it. So it's even more important to have transparency on it, which a November election would, um, would kind of guarantee. I would even encourage you guys each one, you have to be in agreement on it, to make your opinions on it known to the, um, the community, how you feel about it, why you want to vote this way or that way, so that they are informed. And it's not another one of these things where people feel it was just kind of pushed through when they hear about it later on. So, um, you know, there's, any taxes that you have impact people. And there's a lot of well-to-do people in the town, but there's a lot of people that are facing partnerships, especially with the, the environment and inflation. And, you know, taxes should not be a, a shell game. Sooner or later, the money's going to come doing taxes. And if the money that's still there can be used for something else to reduce tax burden, they should know that also. So I just ask for transparency is extremely important.
Thank you for your comment. Any other citizens comments?
I swat another man.
Okay, just try to keep, just a reminder, this is not in today's agenda. Typically, there's more related to that, so just try to keep it short. Thank you for the comment. If you want to make one other comment, I suggest people watch the meeting that we had last week. It talks, or last month. It does address all the conversations of why we made the decision to go the direction that we're going on that and.
And our opinions. Yep.
All right. I'm talking to Greg Scialzo, Sandler Drive. I thank the board for the time to hear the comments. After reading the article in the source and listening to the, um, uh, last, uh, last month's, uh, recording of last month's meeting, I did have concerns. I want to request that the board of selectmen place a referendum on the $4 million grant money appropriations for the Academy School Project on November 2024 ballot. Placing this on the November ballot will allow the greatest number of Madison residents to have their voices heard on the matter and show trust in the Madison public to consider both a municipal spending question and a national election at the same time. I do not think that people will get confused or, or it will be pivotal. Madison citizens are smart, we can handle considering both of those questions. February 2025 referendum vote places this question when many voters are out of town and those that are in town will be subject to midwinter weather. Thank you for trusting the Madison public and for your service.
Thank you. Any other citizens comments? Any hands raised?
I have a question.
Yeah.
It's in the commentary area. Natalie, I live on 32 Cherry Lane. I have a question about the straw, the exchange pond field. When that is all being done, will there be access? Will there be improvement on the access to those fields? How, how is that being addressed?
Um, I would refer you to Beach and Recreation. I haven't walked the actual final project, so I know it's been focused on the field restoration right now. So, um, I'm not sure actually what the full scope of, in terms of any of the improvements to the access. I'm not sure. So you're welcome to go down and look at it. Yeah. Um. So, any more citizens comments or?
Yeah, I did, I might as well go.
I thought I'd get away from the whole meeting.
I won't take very long. Patricia Scialzo, Walkers Road. As my husband Greg said, we've been in Madison since 1982. And the citizens of the town have always been well-educated, intelligent, and thoughtful group. So we're more than capable of simultaneously casting a vote for President of the United States and deciding on a local fiscal issue. We're not going to get confused or flummoxed. So in the spirit of count every vote, I respectfully ask that the board of selectmen set the referendum vote for the $4 million grant money appropriation for the Academy School Project on the November 2024 ballot, where clearly the most number of voters will be at the polls. And, um, you know, in February of 2025, people may become disenfranchised who are not in the town or because of weather or whatever, it's, or lack of, you know, publicity. Obviously, if we hold it at the time of the presidential election, people are going to, that's going to be the most publicity and the most people come out. So in addition, also about having updated or accurate figures by February. If it's, if it, actually, if the figures you're anticipating may come in higher than the 4 million, then, um, you know, from my perspective, we, the town was badly served in, in February 2022 when the Academy Community Center Plan was first proposed, for the, if the figures are, you know, going to be that off. So, um, again, thank you for hearing my comments, and I just ask that you keep it at the November ballot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to squeeze in there? Please.
Debbie Helvason, Durham Road. I just wanted to comment a little bit on the academy project. I just feel that, um, the last meeting of the town, the architect and whoever was there talking about that it's not going to be a finished project based on what has been budgeted for the, um, for the school. If I were building a house, I wouldn't build half a house, you know? I would need a whole house. And so it just seems to me that to build, to spend all this money on something that's only going to be half finished does not make common sense. And I would just implore the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, instead of using political ideologies, to use common sense. We've all had, I think, regarding, or disregarding your political affiliation, we've all had financial hardships over these last several years. And I just think that using common sense and not spending more money than you have, you wouldn't do that in your own personal finances, you know, is, is foolish. I said, so please, just stop hurting us by doing all these things that are going to raise your taxes even more down the line. My taxes run up $1,000 in, this year. And you know what? Now is one of the people in the community who's a senior, who is looking at possibly having a limited income. I would enjoy staying in Madison, but it's becoming increasingly harder to do that with all of these foolish projects. I remember hearing a woman online talking about, from Silo Hill, talking about, oh, the community center would be so great because we would have a meeting place for the newcomers club. Well, you know what? Look at this great meeting place right here in the library. They can meet here. We have meeting places here. We have meeting places, I guess, at the senior centers that are being utilized. You need to lower the age to go there. Then, you know what? Like, sometimes you just have to reevaluate and you have to change the plan. Sometimes you go to Plan B. And it, so why not sell the property and have it generate income instead of costing us? People who want to stay here who can't, or who may not be able to because of the tax burden. I've enjoyed Madison, I've been here for 24 years, and I would like to continue to stay here. But the way this town seems to be going might make it impossible for me to do so.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else? Any other public comments?
Here we have three official reasons driving back drive. I'd like to know what the status of the June floor that we keep hearing is going to get fixed. And in addition, the pickleball courts and tennis courts that are a mess. Sandbags have been left there a year ago for deaths that are no longer there. Many is coming apart, who can't even get the leaves blown out until May. May is when the leaves finally got blown out. So I'd like to know what's going on with that.
I'll have the Director of Beach and Recreation post those, some sort of answers to your questions. Any other, uh, questions, comments? There's somebody, it looks like you want to.
Basically, 28 White Birch Road in Madison, I've lived here for 43 years. Obviously, there's been a lot of changes. To give you just a heads up on that, from what I understand, I missed the last meeting. That's why Bruce is, it's one of my things. Um, anyway, just an important information, I'm not going to give you a status of it because I don't know. But what I did know is the last meeting I could go to before the July meeting was we were right on schedule and we were going to get it done. That's, we have $400,000 worth of a grant that was going to go down. So it's going to get done. The issue is, or the information I'd like to give you is if anybody here is interested in any activity in the Beach and Rec Department, we meet the first Tuesday of every month. It's wide open. Come on down. We, we put out an information bulletin before the meeting, an agenda before the meeting. Come on down and, and like this meeting here, please put your two cents in and let us know how you're feeling about this. We'd love to hear it. You know, we don't hear enough.
I think the, one of the things was trying to finish the camps that used the facility, because I know they were going to do it in the fall, or, or end of August, I think, for the floor. But Austin's the best person, he's on top of the project. I just don't know. It's within the next month, is what I understand.
Right. The main point is if you're interested in these things, it's the country meeting. You know, the first Tuesday of every month, we'd love to have you. And it's a lot of very fun meetings, a lot of fun to come and, and talk about this.
What about the roads, then?
That's another, I, I didn't think you could put on the agenda. That's another item we're working on.
Well, maybe they can just, he can post an update on a lot of projects. We actually gave that list out in June at one of our board's selectmen meetings. I tried to do it quarterly where I put up the status on a lot of the town projects. So there's a lot going on. All right, any other public comment? Yes?
I'm going to wait a minute. Yeah. He said, I'm a 1046 sponsor, I'm supposed to road. One, I agree, I'd love to see the vote this fall, just because the more people that vote, the better. So that, you know, I agree with that. Second, we have these beautiful new Madison signs, love them. Can we clean up the old ones with the vines hanging on them?
They're gone.
We're going to clean those up?
New ones.
Oh, all right, well, either one. So we're going to get rid of all the old ones too. Okay, and third, we also have board police commissioner meeting. We'd love it if you guys have issues with, sorry, a little plug.
Yeah, issues in town. Those we need to. Any speeding complaints? Go to them. All right. Natalie. And one last call, and then we'll move on. All right, great. Well, with that, then, I will close out citizens comments. Number six, set agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, all right, thank you. Um, I'm number seven, discussion of establishing a poet laureate for the town of Madison. So I'd like to invite, if I may, is our, is, I forget his name. No, he's not here.
No.
Okay, great.
He had a meeting right before this, though.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, on the other.
Well, so, um, actually, I think he had approached Allison, if you want to come up maybe and join our discussion up here for a few minutes. But, um, many towns in Connecticut, and I think he's got the packet, the list showing like different, you know, towns around that have a poet laureate. We do not have a poet laureate. And some of them are sponsored through the library, some are through the boards, some are through other entities. But it was brought to my attention that this is something the library would very much like to establish in town. And, um, so they would go through a process through the library and the library would make a selection. And then we would just acknowledge it as a board that this person through proclamation is our poet laureate. So Allison, if you just want to spend a few minutes on the benefits, but I, that was really inspired when we met and talked about this. I think it's going to be a great, great idea.
Yeah, so I was approached by a Madison resident named Ed Lent. Ed is a poet and he's an artist. His, actually, his artwork is in the room across the way. If you want to pop over there and look at that. He's very involved with the arts, with, um, working with kids and adults and open mic nights and reading poetry. And he, he was actually, he learned about being a poet laureate from the poet laureate in Clinton, who said, Madison doesn't have a poet laureate, why don't you start the process? So he approached me, um, and I was immediately impressed with his, his, just, he's so dedicated to the town and to the arts. He has so many ideas to bring poetry and literature to our town. So we thought the library is the perfect place to do that. So, um, the library would sponsor the first poet laureate. We're asking the town of Madison to issue a proclamation to make it official. It would be a three-year term. And then in Ed's last year of his term, he would start the process of letting other people, you know, have an application process. And then there would be, you know, some sort of a, um, an application where they would, people who were interested would apply for the position, and then that person would take on for the next three years. So, um, yeah, so we're really excited about it.
There was just a lot of cool things, I remember he was talking about that you could do by promoting. And wonderful was just like a scavenger hunt for poets around town. Just a lot of things that might be really fun for the community who participate in, uh, drop businesses downtown to the library, you know?
He talked about writing like a poem throughout the businesses, so like one line or two in each business window, kind of as you go through town. And he has had recommendations, he's a published author, he's done, he's written three books, um, which we have in our local author section here. And he had lots of recommendations from all sorts of folks through town and other poets.
Awesome. So do, do we have a document that describes what a poet laureate in Madison is and what the qualifications are for them?
Yes, I sent something to Peggy and to Jean that outlined.
There's a letter from you saying, I'd like Ed to be poet laureate, but that's all we have.
So in that letter, I outlined, you know, the need for it, what Ed's term would be, the three years.
Well, I mean, the, the library is the one that's going to be established with criteria and standards, right? And then it's in towards saying they're ready.
I think we're just asking for the town of Madison to have your official stamp on it. That, and, but we, the library would carry on the, the purpose and the process and all of that.
And that's going to be developed, uh, in the next three years. So in the next poet laureate, there would be this process. This is kind of launching it, it would be launching it.
And, and you would imagine it must be a single term, uh, when somebody has served as that, and if people step aside and.
I think so, yeah. I would think there are enough talented people out there that you keep having three, you know, new people every three years.
Okay, what is the volunteer condition?
Oh, yes, completely. Yeah, yes. And that already does a lot of volunteering, he's being very generous with his time. So, yeah, there's no monetary funding needed at all.
Well, I think that, um, you know, as they kind of formalize some of this, they can send the information to the board, right? Um, of course, we, we don't have a proper shot, and they just.
I have no objection to the, the, the poet laureate. I just, it seems to me that we should have something that describes what that is at the outset. Um, what, 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 I mean, if, if I ask 10 people in this room what a poet laureate is, I bet I get 15 answers.
So we have something to have. I remember reading a bunch of information that we sent out. Maybe not everything back into the packet, so that's a mistake.
We had sent some initial stuff and then not sent some stuff before the meeting.
Yeah, so it might be the, just what the letter got in there. So I didn't actually check to see what was submitted. There was like a description of what a poet, I remember seeing all that, so I'll send it out to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send it out, and then you guys can have all that. And then we wouldn't be doing anything on this until you kind of, you establish him and then would come to us with the proposed process, right?
Which wants to apply.
Yeah.
I think that it's, it's not, it's, it's not a self-evident position. Um, and so, and I even Googled, what is a poet laureate? And the answers were all over the place. So I think the, what's right for Madison is simply what we should say. I don't think we should aspire to be something that we're not. But I, I don't see why we can't be clear on what our expectations are.
I, I think we have that, I just think it didn't make it in the packet. And I, I'm not the one to convey what's there. So we talked a lot about it and we read the, this was like last month we met, so.
I, I, I too would like to learn more. Because this is the new program, I'm of a mind that we should try more on an experimental basis, maybe for a one-year first term, just to see how it goes, as opposed to launching it for a full three years. It's, it's new and there may be a lot to learn. So when we get around to finalizing a document, I, I just think we, we, we should trial run it for a while before we made a three-year commitment.
I think that's fair, and I would want to see how the community responds to it as well, based on, um, the type of poetry or writings, or, you know. of poetry or writings, you know, that are selected. I would want to make sure that it was something that was comfortable for the entire community. So what I think the idea here was this is really the library is doing this and Ed is really the sponsor of it. They're just looking for the town to kind of blossom in some ways.
That is one thing that isn't agreed upon is generally.
Like, I don't want to weigh answer whether or not.
引起 by governments.
Yeah.
So that's like the one thing that Mr. Google says is.
It's not the practice. If you look at the list, there are a lot of towns, it's the libraries that actually do. Because I'm just saying, I don't know if we want us arguing over whether or not we like the person's poems or what the meanings are. We're looking to the library, it's like the literary, kind of cultural. That's why. So I think we wouldn't want to be in the vetting process. Like, yeah, that's, that's why it's kind of them, and we're like, this is the town of Madison. And we're just, just like we do with a lot of different things, we're acknowledging, maybe through the proclamation and maybe it's how it's written, that we make sure that it's an acknowledgement of the poet laureate that has been established through the Scranton Library, rather than like the board of selectmen is anointing the person.
Right, and we're willing to take on all the responsibility and not have you judge poetry.
Especially, you do not learn even the word.
Right.
Good enough to do. Okay, well, to be continued then. So I think there's obviously support. We'll figure out the right way to manage it with what our role is versus the library's role.
Okay.
Thank you for the.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I have number eight, discuss and take action to approve accepting a Department of Energy grant in the amount of $1 million to fund the emergency shelter generator project and authorize the first selectmen to sign all documents and contracts in conjunction with this grant approved by the Board of Finance on July 17, 2024.
So moved.
Second, okay, this is obviously our big project that we are doing at Poulsen, where we are taking advantage of renovations that are going on in Poulsen to upgrade the electrical system there, trying to do it at the same time and then install a appropriate generator, which the town doesn't really have a full shelter facility available for, you know, events. So, and this is something we voted on, you know, applying for and accepting. So any further questions on this? And Sam is here, if you have other questions.
Nope.
No? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. And number nine, discuss and take action to approve the $3.5 million special appropriation for the capital improvement program from the undesigned fund balance approved by the Board of Finance on July 17, 2024, pending special town meeting approval.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so this is something we as a board have done in the past. And we talked again about, because we have a large undesigned fund balance, that we wanted to deploy, this is money that's already been received as taxes in the past and it's built up and we're also generating interest income on the fund balance. And we want to redeploy that to save on future taxes. So we're trying to take some of that money that's sitting there and put it into our CIP so we don't have to tax for those projects in the future. And so we talked about different amounts. The Board of Finance spent a lot of time, they did a workshop with Stacy and I think she wrote a memo to talk about the process, because I think our board is always struggling with, like, what's the right amount to keep in the, you know, for the rainy day funds, people call it, versus what is the right amount to redeploy and use the taxpayer dollars to move projects forward? And they came up with $3.5 million. We did a $3.5 million one in 2023 and a half. Three, oh, it was three and a half as well, in 2022. No, 2023, a year ago. And so what that does is infuses money into the capital plan and it helps reduce some of the funding requirements in future budgets. So they landed on $3.5 million again. And then Stacy's here to answer any questions. This is all based on the Madison Investment Plan, which we talked a lot about. I think she tagged the presentation, the workshop, and it just looks projecting out, you know, what our cash balances are going to be, what our capital plan looks like, how do we take some of this money and focus and deploy it back into the capital plan? So any questions for Stacy or anybody, any concerns? I think we've all been having this conversation for two years now, right? And we kind of come up with some numbers and then we decided to move forward. And this is the second one of these.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The $3.5 million infusion will be targeted to existing projects. This isn't intended to accelerate the completion or the phasing of the projects. It's simply to provide for the funding of those projects in the out years, where we expect to be drawing down our contributions to CIP in favor of debt service. So we've elevated our annual capital contribution on an annual basis, probably a little bit higher than it needs to be, given the project load, in anticipation of ramping that down and using that net difference to pay for debt service. The taxpayer will see that as a neutral impact to their taxes. There'll be other things that aren't mutual, but this will be fairly neutral. Am I good so far?
Yeah.
Okay. So importantly, this is not $3.5 million that town government can look at and say, oh, look, let's figure out a way to spend that money. We've already got projects on books that we intend to do. This is not going into an undesigned fund. It may sit there for a little while while you figure out where it's going, but that's what this is.
Yeah, so we look at the five-year expenditures. One little difference from what you said, you perfectly explained it, but year five is still unknown. So yes, the five years from last year, that's what this was based on. We're still working on pulling together the program for the new year five. But absolutely, we're looking to look at the balances that are in there in trying to infuse a little bit more money to, in order to fund the five-year capital expenditure.
So keeping the conversation at a high level, with this infusion, how do those individual project fund balances fare? Are we funding everything?
We are attempting to. I do think it's going to be a discussion. The Board of Finance is work looking at the Madison Investment Plan, looking at a planning tool and trying to determine what we can fund capital. So based on what will be budgeted in the upcoming year, as well as grants, grants or donations received, as well as this infusion, I do think we're going to compare that to the five-year expenditures. And then there's going to be a conversation, what can we afford, when, and do we need to move some things around? But the plan is to look at all the funding sources and compare that to the five-year expenditure and hopefully be able to do more than not a good five.
But I mean, I think you're basically, normally we have mini savings accounts, right? And we put a little every year, you know, over the next five years. And we're kind of taking a lump sum and putting it up front, so we don't have to put as much into the savings account. So the capital contribution might kind of come down like this now as the debt service goes up, so it helps our budget overall.
But those little mini accounts, and I remember from my days on CIP, they flirt with black and red ink. And a lot of the work the CIP did was to keep that ink black, right? To keep the balances positive. And I'm wondering about the red balances. And are we, to the point, are we going to have to have discussions about projects that would be underfunded? And are we going to have to have a discussion about prioritizing? Is your concern, Bruce, is this enough? 3.5 or not, or too much?
I mean, we don't have, every year you're given a five-year plan, right? And there's always money out in the end, it doesn't go negative. That's part of our plan, we make sure it doesn't go negative. But every year, there's a discussion, I submit a recommendation about priorities, about the five-year plan, this board reviews it, CIP reviews it, this board reviews it again, and in January, and the Board of Finance looks at it. So there's always shuffling of the deck, because sometimes things change, you know? Priorities change. We might decide this really has to happen now because something's falling apart. We'll push this out another year. So there's always that shuffling of the deck. But we've been running, the balances have run lower than we like them to run, right? So this is going to help make sure that they stay up. And then I think we're going to have to sit there and look at each, I mean, I don't know about individual projects, I'm talking about the overall aggregate. That's what I care more about, right? The aggregate, that we have the funding we need to get everything done.
Well, that's our goal and that's why CIP was established, to, you know, have that one umbrella over not only the CNRE, but the fire trucks and the ones to look at, everything we need to do within the five years. And what we're trying to do is fund the CIP program to accomplish all of those five-year projects or expenditures. So based on assumptions, based on infusions, based on capital project balances, we need to compare that, compare it to the five-year overall of every single fund and what we need. So I do think there's going to be discussions, there's going to be discussions at your level, there's going to be discussions at the committee level, the level of the Board of Finance level. This is what we have, these are our balances, and then these are the expenditures. So we may have to do some shifting, but that, overall, that's what CIP does. It looks at everything all together so we can make the right decisions on what we need when, and, you know, when do we need it earlier or later and kind of shuffle things around.
But Stacy, to that, to that point though, so just want to make this super simple, but if we have 100 projects in CIP right now, is the $3.5 million an attempt to do more projects, like 110 projects? Or is it just to better fund and get completed the 100 projects?
The 3.5 was based on an estimated five-year expenditures of projects over the last five years. So if I'm looking at the five years in average, what we spent over the last five years, now I'm looking at that average of what we need to spend over the next five years, looking at our capital project balances, looking at this infusion, and then comparing it to that average of five-year expenditures. And that will be part of the whole CIP process.
And we always add in year five, a new project, right? So I think to say that this is only going to go to, I mean, we always are adding, you know, projects for a lot as they get done and then they have to come in in year five.
That's what it is.
Right.
And to the average of five years, to Peggy's point, yes, because year one is now dropping off now, we're at year five. But this 3.5 was based on an average of a five-year capital expenditure plan.
Stacy, when external bond rating agencies evaluate the fiscal health of this town, how do they view this kind of infusion? Do they view this as prudent and conservative and fiscally healthy?
They absolutely do. They love our capital improvement program. Peggy and I have sat in meetings with rating agencies. They also look at, and this is new, within the last year, they look at all of our fund balances across the board. Before, they used to just look at general fund. Now they do look at our fund balance and our capital project funds and include that. So yes, absolutely, they will get this as a.
And they prefer this type of use of fund balance over one-off projects appropriations.
Absolutely. So this is trying to like, not do as many of the one-off project appropriations that we had to do occasionally, to try to plan for it so we don't lose.
So I was kind of working up to a point, and Peggy touched on it earlier, that the board of selectmen sees all of this before it goes to CIP. And point of fact, we're handed a copy that is on its way to the CIP, we never have a discussion.
We had September meetings. Last year was the first time you guys opted not to have a meeting in September on CIP. Years before that, we had a CIP workshop in September.
I have been on those boards since the CIP started.
I'll send you, I'll send you some slides, because I have them.
Administration, I mean, the prior administration did the same thing. So this is not a new.
No, but I think you're not remembering correctly, because you raised this before. I'm like, no, go back, we go to the Cal, we had workshops in September to make sure that we were comfortable with what I was submitting in the letter. I taught, we gave this high level, you know, but it was given through things. And I have some of the slides from that, I'll send them to you for free. But this last year, I reached out to everybody, do you guys want to have a workshop? And we just didn't do it, so I'm just saying.
Well, then, then maybe my sensitivity is to this is renewed, because as we heard in public comments, and I hear this more, you know, more and more, there is a sensitivity to the rate of spending that the town is doing. And at some point, I mean, we've got an incredible amount of fund debt service that's coming on. This is a reasonable plan to mute the impact year over year. But at some point, we have to get our hands around the rate of spending and the rate that that spending is accelerating. And our capital budget is a really big part of that. Our operating budget, our day-in and day-out expenses are a big thing. And we do talk a lot about that. But I think this board really needs to grapple with that. And to the extent that there's prioritizations, and new prioritizations, because this year will be the first year we've got a strategic plan to test our projects by. For projects to run through us with some linkage to the strategic plan, with some prioritization, so that as it goes to the CIP and they are faced with the time phasing and keeping those balances in the black, that they know what's important to us and.
So we just actually have an implementation meeting today for a strategic plan. And CIP is going to have, next to every project, a link to, what, have this handy? Because we went through this today about tying everything to this. And also, because we're going to be talking about the POCV, there's some great overlap between the two. When I look at what's being recommended in terms of next steps, there's a lot of overlap. So that's absolutely the plan. That's why we have an implementation plan. But I will comment that one of the reasons we had to do so much spending is because we didn't.
Attention, patrons, the library will be closing at 8:00 PM.
We've got to go.
Large, we need to maintain, right? So that we can stay on top of all that.
I get that there are important things that we have to do.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not the point. It's that I'd like to see us take more ownership of what's happening. And I don't think there's a group more in tune with the pressures that, you know, that are being put on the public by spending. We're knocking on the door of $100 million a year as an operating budget, as a town budget. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money.
But once again, we're trying to fulfill what the residents want and they're on a budget every year. So, and then part of that budget is the cash flow. But I agree with, I think though, now the debate, that's the debate we should be having when we go through the CIP plan.
Exactly.
You know, I haven't seen a lot of people say this should be taken out. I mean, there's endorsement of these projects, the boards voting on the applications for the grants, you know, and that's like both boards. The CIP plan is endorsed by the boards and is part of the budget every year that's been passed by the voters. So totally agree, that's what the Madison Investment Plan is trying to do. It's trying to minimize the impact of the taxpayer when we can keep investing in the community, right? And providing services that people want and trying to minimize the impact of it. That's what the whole goal.
I think, I think that, just to react to what Bruce was saying, I think there's an opportunity maybe to take it one step deeper in terms of prioritization. But I think that the spend thing that you're talking about, Bruce, I think, I think some of that, we have to do it in concert with the Board of Finance too. You know, maybe coming up with what the right lane is of where we should be. I think we've got to make sure we're staying in our lane also, which is, what are the projects, what's the, what are sort of the priorities of the town, not necessarily how we spend.
I will relish the day the Board of Finance stands up to us and brought in, in the beginning of the budget season and says, here's what we're, we're going to allow this year. This is, you know, you can even ask for it forever. It's 1%, it's 2%, it's 0%, whatever that is, give us the number, we'll figure out the priorities.
Well, and I think they did that a bit, they're starting to come to that point. I think obviously, we have our obligation at 10%, right? And then the discussion is how much over the 10% do we really need to be keeping? And then what do we do with this, the not over 12%? Right? So, and that's part of this plan. Let's take the funding that we tax people on and put it into the assets of the town, right? Getting value for the taxes that have been paid, rather than just saving the savings account. But they've started addressing this, but I agree, they have to give us a hard and fast number. So, and Stacy, you can share in that conversation, what did they.
Definitely had, yeah, a long conversation at the last Board of Finance workshop, looking at operating expenses, looking at capital expenses, doing, developing some assumptions. They have not developed assumptions, but I do believe that's our plan. And that's kind of how I backed into this 3.5, based on assumptions that they will be making. So I agree, they're on the same path. As far as setting maybe goals or targets, I don't think, I don't know if they're going to set hard goals or targets, but I do think they're looking at along those same lines.
And one thing I want to flag is, as we talked about, is the paving. I, we're going to be coming forward with a plan for just the paving accounts, although there's some infusion.
I, I, we're going to be coming forward with a plan for just the paving accounts. So there's some infusion. We're a little behind because costs have gone up so much. So that's another way to help future budgets, right? So rather than having to increase what we put into those accounts in the future. Um, try to reduce some money into the paving account. It's not going to be three and a half thousand, but I tell you what.
Um, so then, then my final thought is um. If, if we think about this mass investment plan as a light on it. Um, we, we increase the line um sooner than the debt service is here. But there will come a point where we go past the debt service. We will have a normalized level of spending. That um, I don't know if we'll all be comfortable with it is the right word, but we'll all be used to it. Um, the time is now to talk about how we take that line back down to pre bonding levels. Um, so that we don't normalize a much higher level of spending in the long term. This is exactly what happened with the high school and with the bonding payments, the debt service that the high school owned. Um, we can't let that happen on the downside. Um, we have to have a plan and a roadmap to get the annual capital budgets back to pre bonding levels.
But you're not going to do that unless you maintain your facilities at a level where you don't have to start. And we have to think about. Surfing, right? The other large investments is the town will eventually have to wrestle with. It's not going to be an easy fix.
We can always make decisions to take it back up again. But if we don't ever have a plan to take it down. It's not going to, it's, it's going to, it's going to go up from there. And I think that's the danger.
Well, I mean, I think um, one of the other positive things of this, we talked about the debt service. You also remember that we were, we're actually going to be bonding quite a bit less than what we thought we're going to be bonding for because of all the many things. So I'm just saying the numbers are better now because we're not borrowing as much. Where rates have gone up, so it's a balancing act, right? So.
So I don't want to, yeah, we don't have to haggle over eighty nine versus eighty. It's, you know, any way you want to talk about it, it's an extraordinarily large number and it's, and it's. Listen, we're having to put into this plan. Because we're worried that taxpayers won't be able to handle. A year of eight million dollars of debt service in one year, the um. The, uh, uh, what? A thirty or forty percent increase in municipal spending in one year would be devastating to taxpayers. So. I, I don't argue the, the plan, but, but we don't need to keep that level of taxation. On the taxpayers. Once we've gotten past that, it would be like continuing to pay a mortgage after you paid off the house. And, and I, I think the time is now.
Well, I think this is all why they do this, do all the planning, right?
It's definitely part of the plan. And part of the plan is looking at. Three years ago, before we implemented the Madison investment plan, looking at the growth of the annual capital budget. And that is part of the plan, comparing where we're getting between debt and pay as you go or into C I P and comparing where it would be. And um, looking at that, we're looking at year twenty thirty where debt currently is two million dollars. In twenty thirty, the annual debt service is going to eight million dollars. But that is a peak. And then it will start to go down. And part of the plan, and I believe it was twenty thirty three or twenty thirty four. We start to see the total of those two match with that original growth would be. And that's where decisions need to be made. Do we want to reduce the capital budget or are there projects that we want to consider bonding? So that is total, that is part of the total Madison investment plan.
The reality is that pay as you go is very expensive for the taxpayer. Bonding is actually in the long run, the better way to fund a lot of large capital projects.
I'm just going to agree.
And this town has taken a, you know, cash only pay as you go approach. And that's why we're behind on a lot of our investments. So. Yeah, we have a triple A credit rating, but the reality is that has cost the taxpayers in some ways too. So. We're trying to balance all this. Um, we want to stay where we are, you know, and we're going to keep our capital program as a pay as you go program. But I think. We need to start thinking about things a little bit differently because things are a lot more expensive now. Building is a lot more expensive now. Um, so when you look at, you know, five million dollar, four million dollar projects, just to Daniel hand H P A C, that's like a four million dollar project, right? I mean, a lot of times we bond to them. Pay it off over twenty years versus writing a check. Just like you buy a new car, you, you know, take out a loan or car loan or you lease it. You know, we're writing checks for everything. All these projects are checks. The only ones we're bonding for are, you know. Sixty, seventy million dollar projects. So that's a conversation, obviously, at a future date, you know, about the strategy. Because we want to keep the taxes down and we want to make it as streamlined and um. And simple as possible so that we don't have. Pay as you go has price. It's just the reality of it. So um, I think we've taken pride in building up these capital.
Yeah. Project balances. So we could purchase a fire truck four years from now for one point five million dollars. We've done an amazing job.
We save for the future.
And this was before even C I P was established. So I mean, that's a mentality that we're trying, but of course, as Peggy said, or what we know what happened. At the last referenda, there are big things coming our way and that's where you'll have to decide whether you want to go out. To bond, but absolutely we save and we can pay a lot.
A lot. A lot.
Have a, uh, you know, equipment every year.
Yeah, they bond every year for a large equipment purchases. So instead of paying for a backhoe, that's part of, of, you know, a bond that they put out to pay for these things. So. Um, and you know, obviously when interest rates were three percent, they were winning the game because we were seeing that with cash making eight percent. Now, right now it's a little different. So because of where rates are, which hopefully will go down, but uh.
And listen, the, the.
It's a good conversation though.
We have on our, on our equipment.
Yeah.
Is, is, as a financial vehicle, is the same thing as bond.
Right.
It is, it is.
For the trucks that we're doing.
Right. So um, we have made that and we did that back in what?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years ago. You did that? Yeah, I was there.
That was early.
I was there. I was remembering. I was there.
You were? Well, that was a majority of the equipment that we started that four years ago, right? We had all the trucks.
We started leasing program and then we had that study and we.
Right up front of it.
We tried to front over the.
Yeah, exactly.
But yes, we've had a leasing program.
Around six or seven.
Yep.
Years now. Sorry, this is a good. I know, we have a lot of other that I can talk about. No, no, you know what? It's just three and a half million dollars. So you want to have these good conversations. I, I welcome the conversation. This is what we should be doing, right? While we're doing this. So um, but uh, any, anybody, uh, other questions? Are we prepared to vote? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Say aye. All right. Now, but it's important because this is uh, you know, going to be a recurring discussion. Um. Hopefully the next one will. Uh, item number ten, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request with the Madison Police Department, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the undelegated fund balance in the communication account. For end of year overtime reconciliation for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four approved by board of finance July seventeen.
They'll move.
Second, okay. And this is just, you have, we kind of had to make a projection at the end of the year and we didn't have all the overtime information when this was off, right? Is that, yeah, because at the end of the year, we can always wrap up things, closeouts, and that's stuff we did on the June, but this was one that just didn't, the number from. Rub off. Um, so any further questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eleven, discuss and take action to award a contract uh to Freightliner per for the amount of two hundred and fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars for the purchase of a. Twenty twenty five Freightliner truck model, one fourteen S D plus under state contract. Funded in the fiscal year twenty twenty four C I P and to authorize for slack form to sign all contracts and documents associated with this support. They moved.
Second.
Well, speaking of trucks, two hundred and fifty seven vests.
It wasn't a backhoe. I was going to say that. It was a freight man.
It was a freight man. Um, any further questions on this?
Is it, I mean, is this for public works?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, the only observation I'll have for this one and the following one, um, these items that are um. That are in the approved budget and on time and on, on budget, that means there's no special request for. I'm, I'm happy to have them in the consent agenda. Yes. So these are, these are things that are already approved. This is a um, just a, a matter of, of process that can't afford until we make a vote on it.
Actually, we're doing that.
We were doing.
Some of the last ones.
Item six on our agenda is a bit of a catchall bucket and we can just approve all these um, just regular business.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, one take. So yes. Um, item number twelve, discussing, okay, we all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number twelve, discuss and take action to award a contract to S L R Consulting utilizing the uh Scrog on fall engineering. Consultant list for a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars for design bidding and construction services for the Madison downtown center project funded. In fiscal year twenty three, twenty four C I P and to authorize the first life form to sign all contracts and documents associated with this support.
Second.
Okay. We're finally going to design for the third phase. So and this has just all been funded already into brands and C I P. Any other questions?
No.
We're excited to just move forward.
Yes.
finalize that design all the way to seventy nine. Um, so there'll be some public outreach about this once we get to that point, but that's exciting to see that. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
With gratitude.
Yeah. Um, item number thirteen, uh, discuss using funds from the planning reserve for bicycle pedestrian advisory committee townwide study. They moved. Uh, after this is.
It's just.
We're going to go out to R F P. Anything out of the planning reserve required board of slack on a board of finance approval. So just wanted to give you a heads up for the study. We're going to go out to R F P. We kind of have an idea of what, that we think will come back. I don't want to say what that is. But when we get the bids back, we'll be getting an approval. But this is a study that's been uh, on our list for a while, um, that they want to get moving and finalize. So.
Is this like related to sidewalks also?
Yeah, it's all of it. Um, and it's a townwide um, study. They had started a lot of this work on their own, but now the, a professional firm will come in. And then it'll kind of isolate and set priorities for projects and things like that. So.
Can it please include education for people on how to ride their bikes on the road in the right direction?
And how to yield.
And how to yield with cars. It's no, it's not, it's not that. They're vehicles on the road. They have the, they have the same rights as a car. But riding against, riding a bike against traffic is not a good idea.
But walking against traffic is what we're supposed to.
Walk against traffic, drive, even when you're a bike, you are traffic. So you're riding with traffic.
Against traffic, yeah.
Ride with. And it would seem that everybody on route one is for bonding.
So um, so I just, this is kind of formally just letting you know that I'm, I'm assuming no one's going to have a problem when we come back with the uh, dollar amount of the R F P. So that's why I wanted to just clarify it for you. So this is a discussion.
Yep.
Item number fourteen, uh, item number fourteen is discussed and approved. Uh, well, actually, it's not approved, it should be discussed. The creation of the Madison bicentennial steering committee and America typically is C T commission. So um, Jean, if you could share uh, my slides. Um, so twenty twenty six is a big year. We have Madison's two hundred and we have um, country's obviously two hundred and fiftieth. And um, the nationally, there's going to be a whole America two fifty plan that's um, being launched. It's already kind of underway. Uh, and the state has launched a two fifty commission. And um, and now we as a town need to decide what we want to do. Um, and so I want to just talk a little bit, first of all, just there's going to be these uh, state and national commissions. That's going to be focused on the two hundred and fiftieth. Obviously, we want to um, you know, incorporate Madison's two hundred. Um, and so, you know, the um, idea would be we'd have some sort of steering committee that I think we kind of. Put the two together, have one committee and manage both celebrations. Um, and if you want to go to the next slide, I just kind of threw out, this is just for discussion and I thought we'd get some feedback from you guys and then I'll come out with a formal proposal next month. Um, I did meet with um, the library director, the um, uh, chair of the historical society. Um, I remember who else was at that meeting. Uh, and how it is our town historian. We just kind of had a round table about ideas. We've been doing some research on what other towns have done for their two hundred. Um, you know, as examples of how they managed it and then pulling together information right now. But the idea would be to put up the steering committee. It would guide it. And then I think you're going to have spinoffs throughout towns. You'll have like businesses doing things, civic organizations, you know. The library will have some of the historical society, but it'd be nice to have like some themes that the town has. We talked about like a logo for the bicentennial. Sometimes have done that, like their own logo. A townwide celebration event. Um, our, I think it's May twenty sixth, I think is the actual date. So we put like a calendar of events for the year of um, you know, celebrations and then we've involved schools. Um, so I threw up there just like maybe a nine to eleven volunteer commission. I think rather than having a board driven thing, we'd have a board liaison, you know, and maybe the town clerk could be kind of like the staff liaison to this because she's going to be helping with documentation and stuff. And then these are the different organizations who we might want to have on it. Um, so I, I have this up more for just, you know, to start the conversation and then we can kind of. You know, nail it down in August and potentially appoint in September. So they, I mean, people have already, I, I was on this call and some towns have been. Six months into this, but then other towns are just the same position we are. So we're not too far behind.
Peggy, is it too soon to start asking folks to signal their interest in being considered? You just had to be on this committee. Or we need more definition. It, it takes a while to get the word out and for the interviews to take place. So.
Well, I think the board should decide, do we want to designate people from organizations or do we want to open this up as a, you know, anybody can fly in the pick. You know, I mean, in my view, it might be more productive to have a certain number of seats. We want these organizations to be represented and then maybe have people into public numbers. You could probably make it a little thinner. Um, so that was my thinking, but I think I'm, you know, whatever the board would like to do. Um, and I picked nine to eleven. We don't want it bigger than that, but I think to go below nine would be really hard, you know, just because there's so many different compositions.
And you get some of these.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, they could set this up where we would have the steering committee and then you can have separate committees for, you know. Like, you know, the, you know, uh, businesses, you know, kind of like we did with the long term recovery where we had these. Separate committees, you know, for different, representing different groups. Um. So I guess I'm open to thoughts.
The E, the E D C on there, is that because we're looking at a um, a tourism? Type of thing? Is there's a commercial aspect to this?
That's what the impression I'm getting. Um, a lot of people are looking at this as that and um.
For.
Yeah, for tourism and um, the, especially for people celebrating the two hundred that in the past, they did a lot of like. Cultural tourism, historic tourism events um, to generate, just people coming to Madison, you know, elevate the profile of town. So that, and I know some towns, their economic development commission was actually uh, wanting the, you know, the celebration. So. Um, I think for us, it's going to be a piece of it, but it's not going to be providing, you know, I think it, I think it's more about just the depth of history and in fact that it's our two hundred. It's just exciting, you know. Um, so we'll have all our. You know, obviously important commemorations of our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, but I think highlighting Madison's own, venturing out on our own. It's kind of cool that it's coinciding the same year. Um, so you know, there's lots of ideas. People talk about events that we could have and then kind of we're going to start digging through the archives of what they did in the bicentennial. In Madison, and I'm sure we have residents who.
Oh, you are.
Enjoyed that.
So I, I like this. I think it's great. I think. We want to be careful that this is not just looking over our shoulder at the past, but also incorporate some forward. Looking, um, thinking into it. So um. Who, who we want to be in the next two hundred years? Well, I mean, just.
But I was going to say this.
I mean, yes, why are you getting up on fire?
We've got the, the things there to, to do that. I just, it's, it would be easy to put on um, colonial clothes and walk around and. You know, be eagle Madison for a year, but I.
Like the word here.
I don't think that's, that, that, that does it service.
So you're volunteering for that part?
I'm not.
But I think um, if you go back to the themes of the state was highlighting and we can adopt those, the committee, I think needs to have a conversation about this. Um, you know, those are really broad. I like the themes a lot, right? It kind of helps you. You know, telling inclusive stories about everybody who can't even lived and thrived in Madison, both their native heritage or our colonial settler heritage. The power of the location of the beauty of our, where we live. And then I guess a much.
Good as we.
History.
I feel like that's like the, the reenactment. I mean, yeah, yeah.
Places that are like really cool and.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we've done that here before. They replicated a battle. Yeah, well, we've done that here before. They replicated a battle and stuff, so we were talking about there's some things we kind of used to do. You know, so anyway, there, there's a lot of fun, but pleasure in point, obviously, want to, you know, talk a little bit about what we aspire to be a two hundred years from now, but.
Or pickleball courts, right?
So it's funny because I remember there was that portrait of Vera Dallas in the rural town hall and she was for selectmen and she's wearing colonial outfits. It's the only picture of her. I'm like, it's not gonna be me again. And that way, because she was nineteen seventy six, but she was, she was select for the back, so I know.
The Madison High National Church did a big, I don't know, a hundred year anniversary or something. I remember having to dress up with some silver.
Well, they did a ball. I was talking to a resident who was in the seventies. I'm sure we have a lot of people here who have moved here in the seventies and participated in a big ball that the town held and stuff like that. So. So I think it'll be great to see what the committee, you know, comes up with. So this will come back in August and maybe I'll have, Jeanne, if you could email this to the board, just because it's a structure to look at, you know, and then if you guys have ideas or how you think the committee should be set up or appointed, let me know and then we can bring something forward in August. So, so that is item number fourteen and we'll move on. Okay, poor Carol's been very patient. She's used to staying up late at night though. So, update on discussion of the comments related to the draft plan of conservation and development. So we have the chair of the planning and zoning commission here. I know Erin couldn't be here, obviously, because of the family situation, but want to welcome you. I know you had your public hearing. Last week or two, eleven? Yeah, which unfortunately I couldn't attend, but I understand that you had some good feedback, you know, had good attendance. And, you know, I guess if we want to share, I did read this, I've got specific things that I could just email you and if you want to share them with your team, I can do that, like, you know, and I, I think overall, I thought this was really well done. So I want to compliment the commission. I thought it was very well done and it was funny, I kept comparing it to this. I'm like, your implementation fund is so much better than ours. It's a lot simpler, it's cleaner. So we're gonna take some tips. We were talking about this today in our, in our meeting in town. But I thought it was very well, well written and well done. I was not happy with all the work that the board of selectmen has to do. There's the thing I would say, is this the best place to land or not? You know, I'll send you my thoughts on that. But, you know, congratulations. I think it's great and I like it aligns well with this generally. And I'm just excited to see this move forward. So I think overall, like I said, there's some little bits and questions I had. I don't want to take the board's time tonight and I'll email you those. So I don't know, have other thoughts from the board?
I'd love to just hear the reaction, maybe Carol or.
Yeah, sure. And I also want to say I'm here with our vice chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And also, just as a quick recap, we had our public hearing started, opened on July eleventh. We continued it until August first. Also, on, on July eleventh, I attended the regional planning commission, the South Central Connecticut Regional Planning Commission, when they voted on our POCD draft and they approved it, loved it, said it was robust. I really liked that adjective and then it was well aligned with the regional POCD, so that was all.
We got an A on our report card sometimes.
Yeah, so we, so we went into our public hearing with that good news. And I think you got good feedback. It was, it kind of ranged from overarching, such as too much focus on growth and development, not enough on natural resources. To the specific of why did you take out this sentence about nitrogen loading? So we're kind of trying to, you know, again, figure out what's important to include, not include. It's still an open public hearing. We're still receiving a lot of feedback from everybody. We, we look forward to getting your feedback. And specific or general, you know, whatever it is, the whole range, we appreciate getting. And we still have time to make edits and even after the public hearing closes, we still have some time to make edits. And you think you want to add?
Not really. I think the, the, the POCD does reflect the strategic plans and not everything strategic plans to the POCD. Anything had to do with that side of the strategic plan to ensure that it was in harmony. So that said, I think the feedback we got most of it was focused on beefing up the conservation side of the plan of conservation.
Yeah, I watched the recording and there was really good participation from the public at the meeting, community stakeholders, some really thoughtful comments offered by members of attendance, or the public that was in attendance, rather. And for anybody who hasn't had a chance to take a peek at it yet, the easiest thing to do, go to the town website, in the search bar, just type in P O C D and it will come up as, you know, the top hyperlink and, I mean, it's. Gosh, there's, I mean, what, eighty, ninety, over a hundred pages of the P O C D. And so really great information in there encompassing all aspects of the town. So I encourage everybody to take a look and if you have comment, feedback.
Send them our way.
Send them to planning and zoning.
I'm curious, is there any risk of going too specific in a P O C D? Is it better to stay high level or is it better to get more detailed? I'm sure it's like a balancing act.
What we ended up doing was coming up with seven policies, which we felt really strongly about. And then within that, there are action items, I think there are what, fifteen or so? And then even sub to that are specific, more specific kind of tasks, which are easier to manage. I think there are about thirty of those. And, and we compared it also, as you know, to the two thousand thirteen P O C D, which had over a hundred things and not very many got done. So we wanted to, you know, really prioritize and get what we thought reflected the values of the town. And then Peggy, to your point about how many times supportive selectmen are.
We need to fall.
Implement, implementators or whatever the word is. We, we were thinking that you would be delegating.
Yeah. No, no, I know. Well, I will say there was, yeah, we were having a talk about the planning reserve today and I pulled this out because you made some good suggestions about some of the studies or like carbon management plan that overlaps. So we're talking about what are our planning reserve priorities for funding is gonna be over the next like two years. And so some of these, I said, let's add those on the list to make sure that we're, they're in the, you know, in the pipeline. Because some of these are, especially the water, we were talking about the water resource, I forget what it's called in there, but some of these things I think are really important, our waterfront public use plan, you know. Big things that we've never really done a lot of planning for, you know. We kind of looked at the overall like tour club and that kind of stuff, but we haven't really zeroed in on that important, one of our big assets, right? Is the coastline and that's also obviously a significant impact with the climate change. So, and there was, yeah, I think the silver certification, want to talk about that because.
Sustainability.
That's a lot of work. But I'm happy to be sustainable, but so there's some, a little things in here like that, that, you know, I can email comments, you know. So I don't know, anybody else?
Yeah, we encourage comments from everyone.
Have you heard from the boards and commissions that are tasked in the implementation?
Mostly, but not all of them. And we'll be reaching out again to them. They've been sent several versions of the draft at various stages and so they've had the opportunity. But the implementation table is a relatively recent.
Yeah.
Plan draft and product, so they may not know that we're having them.
Well, and I'm wondering the departments too, because I know, like sending it to, maybe I'll just send it out, one last push to the department heads, like beach and practice and tax law, public works, you know, there was some things that, you know, we should probably acknowledge their role a little bit more too.
Sure. And also, this is subject to change and it's, you know, living documented, as we've said, as new commissions are created even, that's one, one thing that the stormwater group that's expanding to include resiliency and, you know.
That was on my phone.
We want to get that, that'd be great if we could get that new, the new, the new mission in here.
Yeah, yeah.
But it can be updated too. So as, you know, as, well, even as climate change or, you know, we didn't anticipate pandemic, you know, in two thousand thirteen, so there will be things that will cause us to adjust, I think.
We changed it. Scott, I wanted to respond to your question on the level of detail. So we did have a debate on that. And I think where we ended up was to not create a document or try not to create a document as our micro manage. Those were being asked to lead and implement and, and you're not there, so we have no clue what happened next year, no less than ten years. So the intent was to create direction and then the implementation strategy and then ask the people who were in charge of implementing it, figure out how to do this. We're trying to find where we're gonna be in the future and then someone else has to figure out how to get there. And then every couple of years, we should look at this and change it all.
Carol, I sat in on a number of the public sessions and I remember a lot of conversation around the word growth. Growth seemed to me were different things to different people and some people didn't even like the word growth.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this document would benefit if an attempt was made to define. I don't know how to define it, but.
Yeah, that came up during, during the public hearing.
It would be good to define it because there are a lot of misunderstandings and, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to make it sound like it's just full speed ahead growth, you know, no matter what it costs, obviously. So I think that's, that's a great, a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you about it. We may even ask you to help us write it.
Okay, well, I guess then we should get you by August first.
August first, it might, where you help to close the public hearing. I think that's kind of the outer date of our timeline on it.
Yeah.
We do, we will be making revisions after that. And then I think you have the, it comes back to you, I think.
Yeah, I was trying to think, do we adopt this or do you, with permission, do we adopt this?
Though it should, we, we have to.
We have to, we have to adopt. I can't, I couldn't remember what the process was. So that would be in, say, September, we would be doing that or, or.
Probably.
October or something like that, so.
Before the end of the year, I think this. Is there, is there a course highlighted?
Well, yeah, there is.
We're approved, so we're already approved, right? You said?
Yeah.
Sort of?
Yeah, for the, but, so really September-ish, October, the latest, we should, our board should be.
I think for ourselves, among ourselves, we'll say September.
Yeah, okay.
Scott, I'm making the.
Change.
Yeah, okay. Great.
I wonder if I go back to that. I just want to say, if you go back and look at the files, you will find me giving Vera Dallas a hot air balloon ride on the town. And I'm not doing that again.
Yeah, I don't think I'd want to go in the hot air balloon. All right, I'll go. Yeah, the interest of the border market, what events happen, and that's the first I've heard of that, so. All right, well, great. Well, thank you once again for all the hard work with the commission. It's nice to finally get this, you know. And thanks, well, and then to everybody that worked on us, so. Okay, great. So, so the next item sixteen, I just wanted to highlight, and I hope, I might have to print out what was sent out, right? So, when we passed a new charter, there was this whole discussion about how we have the ordinance things that aren't in state statutes. And then I got, we started giving a conversation like, do we really need the ordinance, like every committee? And as I talked to town council, you know, really, you only need to do that for like a border commission. And that has like regulatory, you know, and, and so her thoughts were, we can use this as an opportunity to update charges for committees. For example, we talked like bicycle pedestrian committee, but do we really need to ordinance that committee, right? I think there was this view that if it wasn't an ordinance, it would go away after two years. That was what the old charter had in it. We now have, I think it says, the next election. So really, technically, any committee would stay on for four years and then the new board can then just vote to sustain it, you know, and.
But does the charge stay in place? The same charge?
Yeah, well, we can update it if we want. We can do whatever we want, but it's, we don't have to go through, you know, because the ordinance is kind of, you know, goes to the ordinance book. So then it's like, it's really hard to change it and then, and then you have to have a public hearing and whereas we as a board, and some of these are just committees.
So legal, legal document versus non.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and it's simplifying. If you want to make a quick change or you realize something isn't working the way you want it, then we can just vote as a board to change the charge versus having to go through like a new ordinance process. So. So this summarizes kind of all, which is, you know, you look at this, it's a lot, right? And so Jeanne did a lot of good work researching, where do we have an ordinance, where do we have, you know, is there state statute that's tied to it, what's required in the charter? And so, so I think that if the board is comfortable with that approach, right? And I, we didn't do it here, but, you know, I could come back at our next meeting and just say, okay, here's gonna be the ones that are ordinances, here's the one we're gonna keep as committees. I haven't really gone through this yet to do that. And then we just kind of agree that's our status quo, right?
Yep.
And then, and then, and then we'll, we'll get the ordinances done. We've got a lot of those in motion already to finish by the end of this year, the ones that we have to, because of the charging. Does that make sense?
Was that the end of the aviation committee?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we have some deponement things we still have to care about.
The solid waste committee.
Well, we do, but that needs to be renamed because that's the, that's transfer section. So that one we do. I know, I didn't pick that name. Guilford Hall or something else. So that'll, we'll come up with a new charge for that and, well, actually, we're just gonna narrow what Guilford has for it. Okay, so we'll come back on the list of committees versus boards and commissions. And I think with that. Item number seventeen, discuss fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five funding for town volunteer fire departments. So this was a request by Bruce to talk about during the budgeting process, we took an approach that all outside, all departments outside of the town departments would receive a three percent increase. We did that for the library, we did that for the volunteer fire departments. I can't remember who else. And the ambulance didn't even ask for an increase. So we kind of capped it at three percent and rather than granting their full request, town departments had to have a one percent decrease and then we cut, you know, for non-fixed cost. And so we kind of landed there, but I know Bruce, you wanted to talk about the fire departments.
So, yeah, so.
Didn't have more than the three percent or the.
So there was, there was a portion of their, their apparatus and equipment maintenance fund. Both companies came to us with a, with a very similar story, which was that the, the cost of maintaining the, the equipment, the replacements, the, the replacements that need to happen. Had gotten to be, had grown, just, I mean, for, for inflation, right? And it was, it was a small amount. It was around eight thousand dollars for each of them. And as we got into the waning hours of the budget, in that additional request part of the budget, we were sort of, you know, kind of lopping off the tops of a lot of the different things. And these two funds, each of them, we did about twenty five hundred dollars. So about five thousand dollars combined. Hard to argue in a ninety eight million dollar budget that we're moving the needle much by shorting that, that extra money, twenty five hundred dollars each. And, you know, now that we're in the new year and I am ever aware that the board of finance unsolicited put extra money into the discretionary fund. They put the contingency fund, right? They, they put ten thousand dollars in that we didn't ask for specifically and, and as a selectman and taxpayer at their public hearing, I decided, please take it out because we don't have a use for that money. Our, our contingency fund is adequately funded. We don't need it, keep it out. In their wisdom, they put it in. Here's the trick. If we don't spend that money, it just rolls over into the undesignated fund balance and it represents yet another surplus budget item. So I thought, okay, what's a, what's a good use of the money or part of it, because I'm only imposing about five thousand dollars. And I went back to the extra, the additional requests and saw that the both fire companies, you know, we could make their increased budget whole. And have zero impact on, on budget. We're not shorting any other program. We're not taking away from anybody. And at least half of it, we're ensuring that it doesn't go into the excess fund balance, which I just, I, I can't think of any other way to say it. I hate it when we do that. So, yeah, so my original request was a. Um, so uh, yeah, so my original request was to discuss and take action to um, fully fund those two. It was twenty-five hundred dollars and eighty, twenty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars for Madison House Company one and twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for Nomac. Um, and I mean, I, I would, I would move and go up in the agenda and, and, and take action on those items.
So I think I mentioned to you that with the charter, the um, uh, contingency account doesn't require board slot before the finance approval.
It doesn't, so it doesn't require, it doesn't prohibit us as a board from giving you guidance on something that we think is a good idea.
Right. And um, right, I'm just pointing that out because now you start a precedence. I, I always see that as like starting a precedence. Now we're going and using a contingency fund, right? So that, that, that would change. And then second of all, the concern I have is we've always told all the outside departments, you know, here's what we're giving you for the year, but there, if there is some great need and you feel you can't fulfill your duties and there's a great need, come back to us and we'll help you out. That's when you go to the contingency. This is the beginning of the fiscal year, so I can see like six months from there, they're like, the maintenance went up again and just eight half our operating budget, we're going to be six thousand dollars short for the end of the year. And then we go, of course, we, we, they have to operate, they have to meet your needs. Um, but I think trying to do this now, in my view, kind of set the bad precedent also because now we've just circumvented the budget process. I mean, we have the library, they had, you know, they got to three percent. That was a significant hit to their budget.
So that's the operating budget. This wasn't part of the operating budget. This was
So this is where I'm, I'm trying to understand though.
This was an additional, this was additional ask.
The request at the back of the book, right? They were, yeah, it's the request.
It was separate from the three percent? No, sorry, from the, uh, so they asked for um, additional funding request to do the cost increase for annual apparatus and equipment needs, which is part of the operational expense. And then what we did and we looked at their total for budget and increased it. Right. So they got an increase and how they want to divvy up that increase is their discretion. So I'm not opposed to supporting her, but I guess I'm just concerned about, what does that say to all the other organizations who budgets were, requests were reduced or even their budgets were decreased? And it's July, you know, so we just started the fiscal year. I would say that's how, let's sit down and talk, let's get a couple of months into the budget and then see where you're struggling. And then if you need to do the contingency, what you do. That's all. That, that is my approach. Or do other board members feel differently? I know for sure.
Yeah, I do. I feel threatened. I mean, it, it's, it's a relatively small amount and my concern is we'll forget about it.
I don't think they
Yeah.
If they, you know.
And we've seen over the years, departments are not shy about coming to us when they, when they need something. Um, sometimes the, the private public partnership organizations don't always know how to approach. Um, you know, I think we
The fire departments do.
Well.
Could say that kind of.
They're not wildfires as we meet them. But um, at the same time, waiting until the third or fourth quarter for such a small amount and, and quite frankly, for what is by every single definition, a surplus on day one of the budget um, to find a home for it. I, I don't, I don't, I'm not worried about setting a precedent. I'm not worried about sending a mixed message to any department. I don't see it as a um, as, as getting around the budget in any way.
It's hard being a selectman. Bruce earlier in this
Right?
Earlier in this meeting, you made a passionate, on target reminder to all of us that we need to be careful about our expenditures. And um, at this moment, I'm reminded how difficult it was for us in each and every budget cycle, especially the last one of uh, making judgments about how much money to assign the various line items of the budget. And it was painful for all of us, especially this side of the table here. Um, and so it's hard to be a selectman. Um, I think we need to continue to exercise our judgment about what is the appropriate amount to allocate. And I'm glad we have contingencies because life happens. And during a fiscal budget year, things happen that we just don't anticipate. And um, I think it's proven for us to have a cushion. Um, I'm a great supporter of volunteer fire companies and if they need our help during this year, I agree with you. They're not shy. They'll be back to tell us and I'd like to have the wherewithal to support them when they, when they need it. So um, I'm not speaking for or against what you're saying. I'm just pointing out, this is difficult for all of us. And um, I like the fact that the contingency gives us that flexibility when we need it because we don't know when we're going to need it. So I would rather not spend it at the beginning of the year. But with my proposal here, we would still have a hundred percent plus five thousand dollars of our contingency that we asked for. I'm not asking us to dip into
It's budgeted.
The contingency that we budgeted for. Um, simply this, this surplus money that, that, that we were, that we were given. I, I'm one of four votes, guys. So I get that. I make, I mean, five votes. I, I make my point and um, and democracy happens. I get that. So.
And I would argue as well that, you know, making sure that the departments have the money for those maintenance needs. Um, it's potentially going to help us offset bigger costs because, you know, if they felt like they had to make a decision on maintenance of whether it's medical equipment that they have on board, like the fibulators and that sort of thing, or uh, maintenance of the vehicles. We could be saving money in the long run by not having to do a free replacement if they didn't feel like they had to cherry pick. Maybe what was the most important thing to maintain? And so it is a public safety issue. I would believe that. I think I'm just, oh, sorry, Scott.
I, 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 I agree and I disagree, Bruce. So Bruce and I, in full disclosure, have talked about it several times and I, I completely agree with what he's saying. But then I listen to what you're saying, Peggy, and to me, it's a timing conversation too. So, you know, I hadn't thought about snapping the line at the beginning of the year, the budget starting July first. And maybe we put a pin in this conversation and we look at it in six months. Who knows? Who knows? Maybe their, maybe their maintenance will actually come in less. I mean, that's the whole beauty of a budget, right? Um, I guess I would be more out to wait and see, but yeah, push up the shovel. I'll support it, Bruce, if you want. So.
Well, it's the only agenda for discussion and for, for action. So.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a, uh, worthy discussion. You know, let's, you know, and I'm happy to meet with fire companies and talk about
See how they go.
Yeah, and if they feel like they, I mean, it's not about the size, they, obviously we recognize it. I just always look at precedents, right? And then I say, okay, what about all the other groups that had to make reductions to their requests and not have that money available to them? They've seen that as a priority too. So are they going to start coming in July one, July two and saying, okay, can we use contingency for this now? You know, so that's what I'm that's all.
Right. And to be clear, if the extra money wasn't there, I'm going to be bringing this aside. I'm bringing it up.
But you know why the extra money is there? Because the, the board of finance wanted to uh, uh, have extra money available if the police department was successful in recruiting effort.
And, and I also remember that we specifically said as a board, we don't want to put the extra money in.
Right.
We, and we specifically said
Right.
We don't want to put the extra money in and they did it anyway.
Right.
And
But that's not, we're not going to know what happens to that ten grand if they're going to even deal it until, you know, in this spring. I'm just saying, like, so I feel like you're trying to like scoop it out of the budget right now.
I am.
So then they
They take your public taxpayers' ten thousand dollars that has no use. I'm trying to put a good use against it.
Right. And maybe we have plenty of time to do that because over the next couple of months, I'll meet with fire departments and talk to them like what hardship was caused by us only giving in three percent versus the full amount that they asked. And, and, you know, and, and you can bring it back up again. If you strongly love this, we'll take a vote on it. You know, I just feel like we shouldn't be doing this right limited to this third year. That's all. So maybe we agree to talk about it again in like September, October. Because they can do you.
No, 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 no. Okay. So, so to be clear.
Oh, so you went to them.
This is all me.
No, he hasn't even gone to them.
Oh, so they're not just going to be bringing.
This is me looking, this is me looking at the budget going, I have a real problem with this. I had a problem with it at the time.
Right.
Now we're in the new year, the money is in the approved budget and I'm taking action or I'm trying to take action. That's, this is, yeah, this is
Okay.
First of all, this is me.
Okay. Well, and, and what? Let's all be clear. We're trying to help the fire department, right? It's not like they're trying to do, you know, trying to help the fire department. It's a more funded, so.
I guess if there's a need, we'll support them.
Right.
I think that's the, that's the difference.
Okay. All right. Uh, so moving on to item number eighteen, um, any citizens comments?
I'm going to state your name and address first. Laura Downs, fifty-four Cory Ledge. I am a new member of the Board of Trustees of the Scranton Library.
Yay.
Um, I have been an employee of the library. I have been on the library expansion building committee. And I just wanted to address the um, P O C D and a little of what I said last week at the public hearing. But now that you're here in the building, um, I just wanted to say some of the points in the P O C D um, are just perfectly described what the library has done here. Um, we took the old part of the building, preserved the history of the building and enhanced it. Um, we made a sustainable building. Uh, we made a completely accessible building. We have shared parking for the downtown in the rear of the building. Um, we had a public-private partnership with the town and we completed the building on time and on budget. So I just wanted to say, yay, library.
Thank you for all the work and I know you had an involvement in the, some of the decorating choices or design choices here too. It's beautiful in all of this building. So it's, it's fantastic building. So please state your name and address.
Master Grade Scouts on sixty-four Wolfers Road. Had a very quick question for you. The bicentennial brought it to mind. Um, a number of people have asked about it. The James Madison portrait, uh, that was up for years in the town hall has been down. The media has been down for a long time. I had heard it was put in the posse on the right-hand side. Is that, talking about town pride, is that going back up there anytime soon?
Well, I think the plan, well, we're not supposed to answer questions before we answer the question. And we painted the wall. We, it was, it just, it's too small for that space. So we wanted to figure out and we wanted to put like the town logo or something up and then we're going to hang, that, we're going to take down some of the different plaques and set up a plaque wall in the hallway. So we just haven't executed on that. It's but you're right. It's, it's due. It's just been on the list.
And it's not in a closet, inside your office right now.
Yeah, so, um.
So do you.
So, but the intention was to put the town seal up and then we had, we were trying to get somebody, maybe an artist to donate to paint the town seal so it'd be appropriate for the size of the wall. Because it just always looked odd having this tiny portrait behind the board and everything. Um, so we just haven't, haven't. So anyway, so that's just a design thing, uh, that we need to get moving again. Because there's a lot of things, we used to have, this arts society used to hang pictures along and they haven't been doing it. So we thought of making things around and So we'll get to that. Um, any other public comment?
Yeah.
I'm on my Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Hey, Joe.
Joe Mako, state your name and address. Can you hear us? We're really entertaining tonight. I'm ready to go too. Lots of lively discussion. Um, all right. Well, um, I guess with that then, um.
Joe, just submit your question and we'll
Yeah, you can email.
Put it in the chat.
If there is no objection, show we're in the meeting. Take no more further questions, comments by the public. All right. Uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.